Planning Commission to order. We can stand for the pledge and have member Metta on this.
I pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, roll up, please.
Yes. Member Switzer.
Present.
Member Metta.
Present.
Member Lucy.
Present.
Member Kaczynski.
Present.
Member Elzinga.
Present.
Member Bradley.
Here.
Like say McConnell is present, Vice Chair Hunter Proctor.
Present.
And Chair Weinstein.
Here.
All are present.
Thanks. Next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Kaczynski, supported by member Mudry. Approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the agenda is approved. Next is approval of minutes of the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission Special Meeting.
Move the minutes.
Support.
And moved by member Mudry, supported by member Elzinga to adopt the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are adopted, thank you. Correspondence, there is none. All business, there is none. Public hearings.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we have case number zero two twenty four dash oh two. At this hearing, the following described thirty acre parcel of land located in twelve fifteen North Canal Road on the west side of Canal Road between the Canal Club Apartments and the West Charm Estates subdivision will be considered for rezoning from AG two agricultural residential to RM multifamily residential. And case number zero two dash twenty four dash oh three. At this hearing, the following described thirty acre parcel of land located at twelve fifteen North Canal Road on the west side of Canal Road between the Canal Club Apartments and the West Charm Estates subdivision will be considered for a special land use permit for a planned unit development for a three hundred and fifty four unit apartment project being an extension of the existing adjacent Canal Club apartment development.
So just a point of clarification from staff. We have, we have to take these separately. Correct. Okay, so on the first case, the consideration for zoning from AG two agricultural residential to RM multifamily residential staff.
Thank you. So as Mr. McConnell mentioned, we're considering rezoning from AG two agricultural residential to RM multifamily with thirty point eleven or thirty point one one net acres of land. Family, we're referring to this as Canal Club number three. There's some existing apartments, Canal Club one and two to the south. To the north is a existing single family residential neighborhood. To the east is more RM buildings. And of course, to the west is the freeway. The proposal is for three hundred and fifty four new residential units. Looking at significant elements of the comprehensive plan, we have much, much like rezoning should provide for residential development that will address the needs of all segments of the population while preserving existing neighborhoods and providing adequate room for growth along, as well as encouraging residential development in locations possessing adequate infrastructure which are in close proximity to services and transportation facilities and providing regulations permitting a range of housing types accommodating various income and age groups. As I'm sure we're all aware, the state is suffering from a lack of available housing. It is causing housing prices to become fairly unattainable for most, you know, people making median incomes. So by adding three hundred and fifty seven units, we will be helping for our township regarding the significant growth we've had going on right now with the Altium Plant and Amazon facilities. All these new employees are going to be looking for places to come. You know, we've tried to rezone some areas to the west of the freeway and ran into some complications with utility service. So that's a delay. So it's nice having a project of this size in an area that we have significant or adequate infrastructure to have. So if you look at the zoning history of the subject parcel in the nineteen seventy ordinance, it was E agricultural but also C multifamily dwelling. So parts of this property have already been considered for multifamily. Granted, it was nineteen seventies, so that was a while ago. In seventy four, it was, everything was back down zoned to eight, to limited agricultural zoning, ninety zoning ordinance and twenty seventeen zoning ordinance kept that with an agricultural residential zoning district. The surrounding properties, though, as you can tell, have been rezoned as development occurs and the existing agricultural residential zoning district doesn't really fit into the surrounding area. Public utilities are widely available. There are some site characteristics. Gary noted that there are some concerns that the soil may prove difficult for construction. However, when you think about all the other facilities or developments that have gone on in the area, I think, you know, that might not be the most accurate statement. And of course, getting to streets access and traffic, the applicant did provide a traffic study, which Gary included a few pages in your packet. There are some improvements that will need to happen on Canal Road. But with those improvements, it should be adequate for this development. Sidewalks and non-motorized facilities, as I'm sure you're all aware, the east west pathway is across the street from this. So, you know, given that right now we're only talking about the rezoning and we don't have a site plan in front of us, it should be known that the township anticipates and expects that the applicant will give us the east and then also construct the pathway on their property. So we can't, in the rezoning application, just a point of note, we can add it to as a condition of approval of the special land use. Gary sent you an email on Friday with updated language to include that. And, you know, we're just going to make it consistent with the SLU and with the site plan if this were to get approved. Any questions?
Any questions, staff? I might be representing the developer that would like to make any comment. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Kirsten Rhimes. I'm the Director of Land Acquisitions and Planning for Edward Rosensons, sixty one oh one Newport Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero two. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you for this zoning change and special land use permit on the parcel that is just north of Canal Club, as you mentioned. Since it's been a while since we've been in front of Delta Township, I'd just like to give you a little bit of information about Edward Rosensons. We are a family owned company. We have offices in Kalamazoo, Flint, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, as well as Indianapolis, Indiana. We handle all phases of developments for our projects from land acquisitions and construction all the way through management of communities once they're completed. The company's portfolio is over seventy thousand market rate apartment units in eighteen states and counting. One of the biggest assets, I think, of our company that sets us apart from others is that we do not sell our properties. The Kalamazoo portfolio has not sold a property since the eighties. So we intend to develop this just as we have Canal Club and Canal Club Two and hold on to it and manage it so you'll know who your management partner is within the community. In Lansing Market, as you mentioned, the housing market is very tight. We own four, four communities within the Lansing Market with two thousand twenty five units right now. Five hundred and fifty eight are between Canal Club and Canal Club Two. Right now, we have eighteen units available all within the Lansing area and only three between both Canal Club and Canal Club Two. So as you mentioned, the housing market is, is very significantly affected by just a variety of reasons. So we would like to be able to increase the housing that's available within the township. As you mentioned, we'd like to add five hundred, or excuse me, three hundred and fifty four market rate apartments. They would be very similar to what is at Canal Club and Canal Club Two. They are three story construction, wood frame, one and two bedroom units. The township's comprehension, how comprehensive plan, as you mentioned, supports multifamily in this area. And we believe, based on our experience, that this is a great site for additional units. We intend to work with the township on, as you mentioned, the trail. We believe that's a great benefit for our residents as well. So we, we will work with them for, to find the proper place for that to come through our site and extend. I believe it's going to go to the north from there as well as the improvements to Canal Club and both increasing that right of way ease or the right of way area and do those improvements. We will do soil testing and things like that as well to make sure that the, the buildings are sound within that site. We've already had some work done for the, the wetlands out there. Know that there's, there's some to work around. So we're, we're aware of some of those challenges on that site. But I appreciate your time this evening and welcome any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant. Yes, Mr. McConnell.
Do you, I know we're a bit of this process, but what do you anticipate the housing price range for the units you'll be building?
It will be similar to what is at Canal Club Two, Canal Two. It will be slightly higher just because we're doing improved finishes. They will be newer apartments. Right now, I look today in our online rates for a one bedroom are just under eleven hundred dollars and a two bedroom is right around thirteen hundred dollars. And that's pretty typical, if not lower than the average for the area.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak on the matter. David?
I don't believe we've officially opened the public hearing yet.
Oh, well, let's do that then, shall we? This is a public hearing. So let's officially open the public hearing for common. I don't need a vote, do I? Oh, I do, thank you.
Move to open the public hearing.
It's been moved and supported that we open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. We now have a public hearing open. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to come and speak on this matter? Please, as you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie and Andrew Slichter, seven seven two five Tarragreen Drive, Lansing, four eight nine one seven. We are in the subdivision right behind where the apartments are looking to go. We purchased our property back in two thousand and ten with the intention of it being a field. It was a family owned property. Having the idea of having apartments that are three stories high looking into our backyard is not something that we are very excited about, to say the least. We just got two sets of apartments off of Willow and those are empty. There's no one in the Redwood Apartments. They're not full when we drive through there. And so knowing that they will probably want to add a street from the Redwood Apartments eventually into Canal Three, that's just going to add traffic to our subdivision and take away any privacy that we had in our backyard. Even with a six foot fence out there, the second and third floor would be able to be looking right directly into our backyard.
So the question was brought up about as far as the housing units and availability that's going around in the area. So it sounds like, based on my understanding, that Redwood is comparable in price to what a two bedroom house is or a two bedroom apartment would be at Canal Club Three. So I know that the, the previous respondent from Rose came up and said that there were three available units between Canal One and Canal Two. What is the housing like in Tammy on the Ponds, at Westbury Lakes, in Runaway Bay, and the newly developed Redwood on both sides of six, or sixty nine ninety six right there? To really get a gauge of this, I don't think that saying we have three available here is an accurate description at this point in time. Because what does that look like? And we've already seen that increase in traffic through West Charm Estates, and it's not a very big subdivision. We have a difficult enough time at times to get police over to our area if we have issues. I know personally I've called before and there's never been someone showing up. So I would be curious how all this plays out. And then on top of that, with the children that are already in the subdivision and the neighboring subdivisions, how that increase in traffic is going to impact them as they have to get on the bus and go to school every day? Because my kids go to Grand Lodge Schools too, and they have to get on the bus. And they're on Canal getting on the bus. And I really don't love the idea of that increase in traffic going either way at this point in time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on the matter?
I'm just trying to see the mail. I, I live next door and I twelve oh seven.
Okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It's okay.
Hi, Dr. Megan Kitten, and I live at seven seven one five Tarragreen, which is also right next door to Steffi and Drew. And this is Wally, my husband. We are still concerned about all that extra traffic. And the one reason we chose that lot is to see the wildlife. And we see beautiful wildlife back there that we're going to lose. I understand the housing. Do we know any idea of what way it's going to face as far as when you build? Do you have any idea? Because if it's facing this way, we're not going to probably have somebody looking in our, in our yard. We can't have our shades up or anything anymore because there's no privacy. And that is another reason we, we chose to buy that land or buy the lot. And and as far as the ground goes, it's a lot of clay, at least where we live. There's an awful lot of clay because we put in our own fencing and that. And that was quite a, it still is a trip, trip. So I don't know, I don't think it's that big of a lot, that big of land for such a lot of things going on. And it will eventually, or it is already, like Drew said, it is affecting our neighborhood. And we've got little kids coming in. I mean, we got a lot of little kids lately moving into the area. So that concerns us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bought our house in twenty ten. And we were really mystified about all the deer. We wound up with at the most we have seen is twelve at a time. And we know that north of us, when they put all that redwood in there, they did leave a path for them to go across the way on the other side of Willow. But like my wife said, the traffic is just going crazy. We're not used to all this traffic. And since the ones were put in on the west side of ninety six, you know, that's added a lot. And, you know, we have hundreds of homes, hundreds of apartments right there off of Canal. Not not super close to us, but there's a tree line that keeps us away from the apartments. But yeah, I, I just wish that, you know, something, I don't know, the DNR gets involved. Something that we, you know, we can help those poor deer out with. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who wish to comment on this? No, ma'am.
Hi, Andrew Slichter returning. I just had a question because, you know, this is a legitimate question for me. So at what point in time was this considered being moved from agricultural to residential? Because it was about a year ago, my wife called because there were trees being taken down in that parcel of land. And she did call the township and said that there was nothing zoned, nothing that should have been being done back there. But there were trees taken down. There was heavy machinery back there that were pulling trees out and there were trees loaded onto trucks. So I'm just kind of concerned or curious as to when that would have happened because my wife did notify the township that that was happening. And she was told nothing like that should be taking place in that area.
The owners sold it.
But did they sell it with the intention of pulling a pipeline through or some kind of traffic through? Yes. So that's would be my guess is that, that would be paying for the trees. And this is all supposition. They were being paid for the trees to pull down in hopes that they would be able to get it rezoned without that additional wood there. And the fact that now they're making a path already to come through there with. If you look where that traffic or where that street is at on the closest to Canal Two, that's where those trees were coming down is where that road is at. So.
Any other comments? Ma'am, if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium. State your name.
My name is Lynn Orta, formerly Hilding. My folks bought twelve oh seven North Canal Road right after World War Two when they got married. So I've lived there most of my life. I came back to take care of my dad. Like seven years ago, he died at age one hundred, but he loved that place. So we've got those pine trees all around twelve oh seven. And I'm just trying to picture where it is on the map because I don't, there's Tarragreen.
You're in twelve oh seven?
Twelve oh seven. It's a farmhouse with the barns. It's right next, it's right south of the property, you know, with the houses. They're sale.
Well, fifteen, so the next one down.
So yeah, you're in this one and then this is the one that's under consideration right here.
The whole rectangle.
It's both lot.
So, okay.
The property under consideration is just northwest of you.
Yeah. Um, so there's a row of trees that my folks planted. And then that house, and then they've got trees around there that were, that were, you know, all planted like late forties, early fifties. So then there's a, just a grassy open area between those two rows of trees. Now Canal Club made a berm when they took the forty acres that went with our house. They made a berm to kind of privatize it for us. So if that's, you know, if this goes through, that'd be something I'd like to see have happen as a berm along that north side of our tree line there. But yeah, it would be interesting to know which, you know, how they're going to face and what's all going to be occupying that area. And yeah, I will miss the deer. They've been a permanent fixture as well. And goodness knows they're running out of places to graze and all. So thank you for your attention.
Any further comments from? Any comments or questions from commission members? I have a question for staff. What is our buffer regulations in these kinds of circumstances where, you know, we have buildings here that are going to be three story buildings that are going to be backing up to family residential?
We told the fifty foot, oh, yeah, bus parking. Right here.
Oh, parking's in front.
I'm just, there is some required berm and I just want to make sure that I'm answering the question correctly. So I'm going to look it up real quick.
Because what I see on the developers' plans is that the backside of these buildings. Nope, there is, I'm sorry, thanks.
Well, these are also preliminary. So I would anticipate things to change, you know, once.
So it says a fifty foot setback, is that correct?
Yes, for RM.
And it looks like, at least on these plans, the buildings themselves would be set back further, actually. And parking would be between the buildings and the residential neighborhood. Is that correct, so far as what we see? And within that fifty foot setback, do we have any requirements as to either natural or artificial?
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
Yeah, there's, I'm almost certain there is a, I want to say a type two berm, which is a thirty foot planting or a type two buffer, which is a thirty foot wide planting area. A berm can be part of it. I think the planning commission would have the ability to specify whether you specifically wanted berm there within the powers of the SLU that they're, they're requesting.
The SOUP.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, would be the, I'm sorry.
I did have a question for the representative.
Okay.
In terms of the, you know, the wildlife, because that's a big issue. Do you have any resolution for that or what's your plan?
Well, for the deer firm, our experience on that, there will be that path. So there will be a route for them to get through the site. But as far as the development goes, there, we do have some room in the back. If you go back to the site plan on the backside, there's some wetland areas that we won't, we can't touch. So there will be that area in the back. So it will give some route for them to go through.
Do you know how much of area that is?
How much of? Typically, I haven't done the calculations on this because it's such a preliminary plan. But typically, we have well over fifty percent of open space on our, our sites. So only fifty percent is either building or parking lot. Fifty percent of it would be open, which is far more open space than what a typical apartment community has.
So the zoning ordinance requires a buffer zone C, which is actually a increased ten, excuse me, ten foot planting. So a little bit denser than a normal like rebuild. So that's the plain view of it, something along those lines. I don't think a berm is necessarily specified in that, but like I said, through the SLU, I believe the planning commission would have the power and authority to require one.
Thank you.
What's the general height of a berm?
Like three feet.
So landscaping trees would be more beneficial.
Well, you can, I mean, you could plant.
Because the trees are going to take some time to grow.
Yeah, so it gets you a little bit more.
Yeah.
So if a parking lot is there, will there be lights on the parking lot? Probably so.
That's for the site plan.
Yeah.
There will be lights typically, and I don't know your ordinance off the top of my head, but typically we have to have cutoff fixtures at any property line. So no light can go over the property line. And so that would be what we would have there. And also to the effect, those two buildings that are closest to the neighborhood there, those are the fronts of our buildings. They have just bedrooms in the front. So typically, and I can't say this is all the time, but typically when I look at our units, a lot of times those blinds are kept closed. So I think that gives a little bit more privacy, privacy. The back of the buildings, which is on the opposite side, has our balconies and things like that, which are much more where people are going to be. It's their living space as well as the balcony. So I think we were trying to keep that on a little bit more private side on that to back up to the housing.
Right, so we have a question before us on the rezoning right now. Let's say enough. On the rezoning right now, let's say enough. What's the pleasure of the commission? Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Move to close the public hearing, all of the favors say aye. All opposed? Thanks for keeping me on schedule, sir. Okay. Thanks, thank you.
I move that the Delta Township Planning Commission recommended the Delta Township Board approval. Of their request through the rezon or privately described as case number zero two, that's twenty-four dash zero two. From AG to agricultural residential to RM, multiple family residential. For the following reasons of which there are two.
By vice chair, Hon Proctor.
Support.
supported by a member of the White Sir. Any further discussion? On the rezoning?
Oh, this is just the rezon.
Mr. Secretary, we call the roll.
Member Switzer.
Support.
Member Medow.
Support.
Member Mudry.
Support.
Member Kuzinski.
Support.
Member Elzinga. Member Bradley.
Support.
Secretary McConnell supports. Vice Chair Hunt Proctor.
Support.
And Chair Weinfield.
Support. Now, next is the case that has already been read into the record regarding the special land use permit. Again. David, maybe a review for, a little review for.
Yeah.
Any commission members, uh, the special land use permit and.
So, um. Wh- what the applicant is requesting is a PUD, um, and in our zoning ordinance, PUDs are handled as like an overly district. Uh, so it's a special uh, request and approval, which um, is needed and essentially the purpose is to increase density. Um, so with a PUD or RM PUD, you can go up to fifteen units per acre. Um, if approved, that, and right now is requesting eleven point five, so uh, per acre. So with about approximately thirty units, it's, it's, or thirty acres, now it's gonna be about fifteen additional units. I think the reality of the situation is that with construction costs, the way they are. That many future RM projects are going to be coming for us with increased density requirements. To the point where it may be appropriate in the next master plan. Session to really take a look and see what the impact between uh, a fifteen unit per acre. Uh, project is compared to like a twenty-two or twenty-five unit per acre. I don't think, you know, practically speaking, there's that much difference with increased, you know, traffic and stuff like that. Your typical apartment actually generates a lot less traffic than a single-family home. Um, per the, you know, um. United Traffic Engineer Study, um, that's not their official title, but um, I can get it for you if you, um. So Nina, so going through the standards for the PUD, the first one is the proposed element shall, development shall be consistent with and further the. Implementation of the comprehensive plan or represent land use policies, which are logical and acceptable change in the comprehensive plan. The proposed development addresses the increasing demand for a variety of housing options for township residents. The project advances the housing objectives stated in the comp plan of encouraging residential development in locations. Possessing adequate infrastructure, which are in close proximity to service and transportation facilities. And providing regulations permitting a range of housing types accommodating various income and age groups. The cap plan recommends that the subject bars will be developed for multiple family residential uses. The next standard is the proposed de- development shall be adequately served by public facilities and services. Including but not limited to streets, sidewalks and pathways, water and sanitary sewer facilities, drainage improvements and police and fire protection. Or the applicant shall confirm that these facilities and services, services can be provided. Um, honestly, you know, this location just being down the street is, will be close to police and fire. Also served by water and sewer, um, drainage improvements, um, will be necessary. Uh, and the, you know, the applicant is working through figuring exactly what that looks like. Um, so they meet that standard. See, the development shall encourage the provision of useful open space and long-term conservation of natural features and resources. Um, so in this project, you know, we noted that there are some major wetland areas, those will be preserved. Um, and really what the PUD kind of strives to. Seek is uh, cluster development, so you know, putting the developed areas closer together and, and leaving more open space. So the mix, the next one is the mix of housing types and densities and the relationship between residential and non-residential uses. Shall be acceptable in terms of convenience, privacy and compatibility. The development represents further housing options for del- for township residents as per the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Um, and in regards to, um, you know, privacy and compatibility, those issues can be handled by. You know, placement of the buildings, of the required uh, landscaping. And being, you know, very specific about where you put those two. D, I'm sorry, E, a PUD may be used to redevelop or improve an existing property where current ordinances do not provide the flexibility required. For the, the adaptive reuse of the property, infrastructure and buildings. Being that the subject for hire is currently undeveloped, the standard is not applicable, which I would agree with Gary's finding there. Uh, is there any questions?
Any comments or questions from?
Do we need another public here?
Their motion to.
Okay, some will.
Move back, Member McConnell, supporting member Elsker to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, public hearing. Folks from the public have already come forward. If they would like to come forward again, they're entitled to do so. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Slickter, seven, seven, two, five, Terragreen Drive, Lansing, Michigan, four, nine, one, seven. Um, I hadn't even thought about the lights, so that even makes me a little more frustrated. That my backyard is going to be lit up by lights. Um, but I would really appreciate some kind of privacy back there and three feet and ten feet is not gonna do it if they're. Gonna be two and three stories tall, and so making sure, my understanding is that there's also gonna be a road. That butts up to my backyard, and so just making sure that, that there is some kind of privacy so that I'm not hearing. The traffic and noise and I, I'm really surprised to hear that. An apartment complex would have less traffic than our residential area because there's less. People that live there compared to three hundred and fifty-seven units that are gonna be behind us. That will probably, most likely all have cars, and so making sure that we're keeping the noise down and keeping the privacy up. Is really important to myself and all of our neighbors. Um, thank you for considering that.
Just, just for clarification, that's, that's per unit, so that like one, one house and one apartment building, the house would generate more than the one apartment.
That unit, yeah.
So again, I. From what I see so far, I see a fifty-foot setback between. The back property line of the subdivision. And then there would be, looks like carports and a parking lot. And then the apartment buildings. And staff explained to me on the map, it says that there would be an entrance off Canal. Proposed drive with Talbot Drive, is it Talbot or Treadwell or what, what is the drive there?
Uh, like I said, you know, the exact, um, I, I wouldn't. Say that this is going to be the, you know, exactly what it's gonna look like when it comes to site plan review. Uh, so the, the drive location's gonna be solely on Eaton County Road, where they feel that the safest location is.
Yeah, the Rome Commission wants the streets lined up.
Right.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, but there is a, but the proposal does call for an entrance. And ingress and egress off of Canal Road, is that correct? To the developer?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so you intend to have one ingress and egress off of Canal?
There would be one ingress and it's up at the very northwest corner or northeast corner of the site and then two back into Canal Club itself.
Right, right, so people would come in, take it, okay, that's number one.
So, Mr. Chair, um, so along this property line, there's gonna be a ten-foot, uh. You know, type one buffer or type C buffer, sorry. Um, and you know, it was talked about earlier that perhaps it's also included in a berm, which is gonna raise that up further. Um, the way our lighting. Goes, they have to be, I think, point one candlefoot at the property line. I think it is also within the um, jurisdiction of this board, if you wanted to increase. That standard and, you know, say that it's a ten-foot or twenty-foot, um. You know, instead of the property line, we could use a twenty-foot uh, setback for light so that there's more darkness on this north part. Um, I think that might be an appropriate um, compromise, uh, considering the concern of the resident. Cause most of the lighting's probably gonna be around these buildings anyways.
Well, in the parking lot too.
A little bit, but you know, they're gonna be probably shown, you know, shining this way as opposed to shining back that way. But that said, we can at least affirm that there's going to be an area of darkness.
Eliminate the light pollution.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I certainly wanna take in. To account. The concerns expressed by, by the residents. And so, I don't know what the language looks like, but I would like to use our authority to. Require as much of the buffer and a berm as well, as well as. As much we can in. Reducing light pollution.
Uh, another tactic we could use is also, um, I think right now by right, they get twenty feet for a, you know, a, a street light. Um, if you were to bring that down to fifteen or thirteen, then that level of light isn't going to be shining in any upper floors.
Yeah, I think in the past, we've required some directionality on those lights.
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, there's two things with, with streetlights, there's cutoff fixtures, which kind of prevents light pollution. But if you're in a second floor and, you know, looking at a twenty-foot light, you're still gonna be able to see that light bulb. So by bringing down the lamp post, um, they should, it should be not, or they shouldn't be as affected. By um, neighboring light pollution.
Oh yeah, so where did, come on up.
I request for this stage, if we could keep that a little bit more broad than the height wise and keep it more like the candle with. Um, just because with LED lights, there's new, we would have to have a lot more lights along, I'm looking, thinking of the drive that goes back. Um, where it says wetlands there, that, that stretch of drive there, we would have to have a lot more lighting along that stretch of drive. Like more fixtures if they're lower, if we have taller fixtures, it would come down and be able to do it with fewer lights, so.
Around the corner, I'm not as concerned about as I am directly behind.
Right, well, that stretches directly behind those houses. Uh, in the, the, the areas with the, where the parking is, um, I assume that the township has very. Specific standards of what the lighting has to be. Um, for the candle wits and thing, or candles, but I, um, for that, so. Um, that would just, I, I caution trying to go too far because I think it might hurt more than help what we're, what you're trying to do. Cause we, we don't wanna have light pollution either, that's not, we're not interested in, in hurting those backyards, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess my question is, um, more for David on this piece. Knowing the size of this parcel. I mean, we're gonna get another bite at the apple here during site plan, are we not?
Uh, you are, the SLU process gives you a little bit more ability to. You know, come up with standards that you feel are appropriate, which match, you know, in regards to public safety and uh, wellbeing. Where the site plan review is gonna be standards in the, in the zoning ordinance.
So if we want them to put certain things in the site plan, we need to do it here.
Mr. Chair.
Member Kuzinski.
Yeah, uh. Included in our ability to specify, uh, right now, the landscaping plan as I, as I see it. Is a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, correct?
Yeah, that, that, that is a requirement for, um, for that.
Could we, could we recommend that we skew toward more of the evergreen type things? Which give you greater density and greater privacy?
Um, I mean, yeah, I, you, you could, we've, uh, the township's done that before, um, if you remember the Casco River zoning. That, um. Buffer that was put in in the early two thousands is, is a majority, uh, evergreen. And it really, I would, I would say it probably took about ten to thirteen years for it to get substantial enough to actually, you know, block something.
That's why I'd like to do the burn.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, with regard to the berm, the berm that exists on the south side of twelve oh seven. Is probably as wide as from this desk to where it says Delta Township and it's taller than me, so. And it's quite effective and, um, yeah, there's a mix of evergreens and oaks. And I was also wondering, the, the pines and the spruce that are already on the. Property concern, will some of those at least be preserved because they're nice, mature trees? That would enhance the, the apartment complex to keep those.
It sounds like the developers said that fifty percent of their property will be green space, so. I'm sure that there will be as much retention of current. Current landscape features as there can be.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to point out, we do, all, we do now have a tree preservation part of our ordinance, uh, based on size and location. Um, the, part of the site plan review for them is to do a tree map, so we can see exactly what's there. We can identify which ones are able to be protected, um, cause I think we can all agree that larger trees are better than smaller trees.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Caden, um, or honey Caden, I have two names. Anyways, I'm seven, seven, one, five, Terragreen. We put up the blue spruce at our house to sort of give us some privacy back there from the deck and everything. And it took twelve years, thirteen years, I can't see their house that much anymore. That's how long it took to grow. So, it's gonna be a long time.
Any other comments or thoughts, questions from public?
Andrew Slickter, seven, seven, two, five, Terragreen Drive, um, would it be possible to zoom in on the image that's. Of the subdivisions already existing, so it's not so blurry, because it really looks like that yellow dotted line that you have up there. Is my property line. Which means, I thought there was supposed to be an easement right behind, an easement right behind our property. So you're telling me from where my fence line is at right now, there's only gonna be fifty-foot setback from where there are gonna be car parts?
Uh, what, what, what do you mean by an easement?
So, behind my property, I. There's, yeah, public easement back there because I know there is, cause there's a drain back there. So, okay, my house is the fourth one in. From the end, this way. Yep, that one, right there. So where is that yellow dotted line? Because right now, that line right, it's right there would be the property line, and that looks like that's right where your dotted line is at as well.
Yeah, I would say that the, the yellow dotted line.
So fifty feet is where there is a fence back there right now that's still existing, so that's all the space that we would have. And that's where they're gonna have their car part, their carports?
Correct.
That's terrible. I have kids that play out back there. Like, that's awful.
Can you go back? David, to the.
And my other question is, how many of you are backing up to this where I've had apartment complexes coming into your backyard? Like, I get the need for housing, but at some point in time. What is the community, like, what, what's the, for the betterment of the community? Like, we moved in here, what, with. Like, we move in here with, with the assumption that this was gonna be open land. And I get that our builder probably told us, bet us a line of crap. I get that, okay? But I also know that there are houses built on there that the planning commission here approved. And then never walked back through because the build was wrong. So, and if you don't believe me, you could probably ask my neighbors because they're supposed to have a, of, a porch or a patio off the back of their house. That's on their side of their house. And the planning commission approved it on the backyard, not on the side. But the builder built it there and the planning commission gave the sign off on it.
The planning commission doesn't.
Have nothing to do.
Or however, however it was, someone from the township had to walk through there, right? So they had to know that that pet, that porch, the elevated porch was in the wrong location. But they still said, yeah, everything's fine. It's super frustrating for us that built in here thirteen years ago and watched our kids grow up. And to know that it's gonna take fourteen years to have privacy again. That's terrible, regardless of whether or not there's a berm. You can put in all the pine trees, all the spruce trees you want. That's great. But I'm still gonna see lights. I'm still gonna hear traffic noise. And the township's just saying, okay, it seems like this is a pre predetermined outcome at this point in time. And whether you think that's the case, the way you're all acting, it, it really feels that way. Like this thing's going in whether I want it to or not. But I wanted to make sure I came here and spoke my piece because I wanted my privacy. That's why I built here. That's why I built in Delta Township. I grew up in the country, Northern Indiana. I really didn't wanna be this close to a city. But my wife talked me into it because this neighborhood's gonna be quiet.
So, I'd just like to say I built my home in Delta Township twenty eight years ago too. And all woods, deer, all of that loved it. And now there's a east west.
Nothing.
Path right behind it and I was just so frustrated. I understand, I understand. Now, I do enjoy the path. I do use it, but I, you know, I don't have my privacy and I just had to put up more trees. And I knew when I built the land or purchased the land that it could possibly turn into something different and it did. And I, I say that only to, to share with you that, yeah, I understand your frustrations. I, I feel that.
Okay, but there is a difference with a walking path. There are passersby, not people constantly, however you wanna say it. Looking out windows directly into your backyard when your kids are out playing. It's a very different thing. I put up a six foot privacy fence for a reason. And now that privacy fence is basically gonna be useless because there are gonna be two and three story apartment buildings that are gonna be able to look over that. And if you walked over there, like if you looked out in that, because it goes like this. So it's still gonna be pro, higher than my property line. Even if you put a berm up there, you put a ten foot berm up, guess what? You're still gonna be able to see over that. You can go walk at me. I'll show you right where I live. More than happy, we can take a walk right now. Any one of you would like to? And I'll show you.
That's what I have.
Now, David. The parking lot is not gonna go up to that dotted line.
No, it's gonna be fifty.
No, there's gonna be fifty foot and then the parking lot and then the apartment comes.
Yeah, fifty.
Fifty feet from my back property line where there's carports, I mean, is what you just said.
Yep, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, that's correct. Still, that's no privacy.
Stephanie Slickter, seven, seven, two, five, Terra Green, John Lansing. Um, so there is. It is sloped. Um, and so the other thing that I just wanted to make sure that you take into consideration is. Our bedrooms are at the back of our house. And so that light is gonna be really concerning for us. Fifty feet is not a lot of space. And so, um, with the traffic and everyone having young kids. And, and, you know, dogs and cats and those sorts of things. I just, I wish there was something more we could do than just the fifty. You know, foot setback. I don't know if that's possible, but having that drive right there. Um, and those carports right there, it's so close. I would much rather see, and I know this isn't up to me, but I would much rather see the storm basin on the other side. And then have the carport, um, just so that there's more privacy, more space. Um, thank you for your consideration.
I believe the storm basin is gonna be part of the protected wetlands, so they wouldn't be able to move it. It's, it is where it is. Um, and the design of the property is based on the constraints of the site.
Any other public comments? None, or you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that the Delta Township Planning Commission recommend to the Delta Township Board approval. With the request for the special land use permit to establish a land unit development, P U D. On the property described in case number zero, two, two, four, zero, three. For the following reasons, which there are two.
Mr. Chair. I just wanna make the note that, uh, Derek had the updated, um.
So there'll be three?
Well, the, his, it's a modification to add the language to require the construction of the east west pathway. Um, addition as well as, you know, put the easement over. Um, and if there was any, anything that the planning commission wanted to add.
In addition to that?
Yeah.
You put that in as a motion or do we need to add it separately?
After. The following reasons are three stipulations.
Right.
That's where we.
Yes, I think we can amend it to add a fourth stipulation using Gary's language, correct?
Sure.
Moving, using Gary's language, is that what you said, Dave?
Yeah.
So that would be the fourth stipulation.
Right.
Okay.
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 Following reasons that there were two, okay? The issuance of a special land use permit for the planned unit development shall be sus. Subject to the following stipulations, which there are four. Support.
They move by member Mudry, supported by member Kuzinski. No, sorry, member Schweitzer, my knowledge. Any further discussion? Dave.
Based on the conversation that we just had, it sounded like there may be room for a stipulation for, okay?
Wanna see what happens here.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Well, then yes, I would like to put a further stipulation. No one else will. And it has to do, um, with, uh, the landscaping. Um, and the lighting. And I wanna be sure from at least what we can do. That we go as far as we can with increasing privacy. For, uh, the residents of the subdivision. I don't know what that wording looks like, but.
That's why I didn't say anything. Can you help us with this precise language?
Yes, I, I mean, I would, I would, you know, recommend requiring, uh, a berm, um, you know, possibly. If you were to do, you know, like a six foot berm, it would have to be, of course, wider. I think we require a three to two slope. Uh, but with fifty feet, there should be plenty of, plenty of space. Um, and, you know, if you wanted to extend the limits of the light pollution. You know, further from the, from any property lines in the AG two or RM zoning district, I think that could be. You know, possible.
We can do a six foot berm. I don't know how high we can go, but I'd certainly like to do.
That, well, the higher you go, the wider the berm has to be to, you know, uh, make sure that those soils stays, stay stable.
I, I want, I want us to do as much as we can to protect the privacy of those in, in the subdivision.
So a berm with landscaping.
Berm with landscaping.
And I would encourage that landscape have as much density as possible. Uh, again, the couple on the side, it'll also cut noise.
Yep. Okay, and then so far as the lighting goes. I understand the viewpoint of the developer as well, but certainly want to protect. The residents from the light pollution. So whatever we can do there as well.
Okay.
That language looks. So that would be our fifth stipulation. There's a motion on the floor, any.
So moved.
Thank you. So we now have four and stipulations, four and five added. Um, it's been supported by the. The person who, uh, put forth the motion. So we have a motion on the floor from member Mudry, supported by member Schweitzer. Who approved the special land use permit. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Schweitzer.
Support.
Member Mado.
Support.
Member Mudry.
Support.
Member Kuzinski.
Support.
Member Elzegun.
Right.
Member Bradley.
Support.
McConnell supports. Member, or Vice Chair Hunt Brocker.
Support.
And Chair Warrenfield.
Support. Motion's approved. David, you wanna focus with the next step, please?
Sure, um, so this is just a recommendation to the township board. Uh, the final decision will be made. Um, we'll probably get it, do it on April first to go some time to, you know, address these minutes. Um, so that meeting's gonna be held here in this room at six PM, your board will come. The, that's when the final decision, shit, the decision will be made. Those are your elected officials. Um, it's a different type of body that, that, you know, you can appeal to.
That's a good point. That's trying to be difficult, but it's. No, you're not at all. It's a great point.
I think we have a responsibility to. You know, push things forward. I guess it would, it would, would have to, is the developer agreeable to? Pushing it back to the second meeting in April, which would be.
Based on the schedule for the first.
Yeah, there might not even be a meeting.
Because of the spring break, they generally.
Yeah.
Don't meet that first week. Well, it doesn't necessarily mean that the board follows that same schedule.
No, but just, I mean, if it's.
Right.
Yeah, the first and fifteenth, there's a meeting. Yeah, so I guess it would be.
Can we decide to do that?
Um, I'd have to, I, I'd have to talk to Gary to see, you know.
Do so.
Um, so if you guys wanna call later in the week, we can tell you, the planning department specifically, we, we can tell you when it will be on the board meeting. No, this is the, the only time notice is sent out is for the official public hearing.
Really appreciate those that came tonight to talk on this matter. Thank you very much for your input. Uh, is there any other business? None? Any additional public comments on items not related to the agenda? Planning Director comments?
Um, Gary's unfortunately ill again, so he's, he's a mal.
Okay, thank you. Send him our best, please.
I think we will have a meeting in.
Probably the, I think the second, like, what in April, there's the. Uh, like, Board of Water Alliance is gonna come back with a site plan. I think Gary might have something as well.
I will not be here. Three meetings in the month of April.
Okay.
So that.
Depending on whether I won't be, might not be here on eight.
Be ready, Murray.
Sorry, close.
I won't be here. Who's it then?
Comments from planning commissions? Thank you all for your consideration and thought tonight.
More often than not, we hear from citizens who. Articulate their concerns about new developments and rezoning that changes their surroundings. And I understand that's. The way things are. My question is. What does a township do by way of? Protecting land. From development? Or is that part of the master plan?
Uh, yeah, that's part of the master plan.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that specifically, the, the parcel that we spoke about today is minutes from major shopping centers. The freeways, you know, adjacent to it. Um. More often than not, our, our land uses are what's used in these locations as to insulate. You know, lower density further in, in the township. I can definitely feel for the, you know, the property owners, uh, in that neighborhood, but it's. Um, you know, the, the single family neighborhood in that location is kind of a rarity.
An anomaly.
Yeah.
I would agree.
But the township could, if it chose, well, no. It could, if it chose designate certain. Um, I guess they'd have to purchase.
Yeah. I, I mean, we, we do that with zoning, like our AG one district is a forty acre minimum. Um, and that's pretty much reserved for the southwest corner of the township. A lot of that has to do with, that's basically a swamp. And you typically need forty acres to figure out where to build and, you know, drop a wild and stuff like that. Um, but that's also a mechanism for controlling development.
As I recall, before my time, this township has been the subject of lawsuits from developers. And landowners.
I'd like to say that since I've been here, we've never been sued.
But I think we had that bit of history at the last meeting, so. Okay, thank you. And we're kind of, any other planning commission comments? One wanna move to adjourn?
So.
The move that we adjourned, all those in favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.